Buenas en hafa de everyone. This public hearing by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and your Guam National Guard is hereby called to order. Today is Thursday, March 20, 2025, and the time is now 1 o'clock PM tomorrow's standard time. For the record and in accordance with the open government law, notices for this hearing were sent on March 13, 2025, and again on March 18, 2025. This hearing was also published on the Guam Legislature website and the Guam Public Notice website. Joining me here this afternoon is committee member and the Speaker of the Guam Legislature, Frank Blos Jr., as well as our colleague Senator Telo Taidiguis Sujos Masi for joining me this afternoon. Before we proceed with the discussion, I'd like to first provide some general rules of conduct for those that are in attendance today. The conduct of this hearing shall be as follows. Written comments or presentations shall be committed, or sorry, shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with your written comments for photocopying. Comments may be read, and lengthy presentations should be summarized to about five minutes. Those offering comments will be allowed to present written or oral testimony, and once you are done, please remain in the room for questions or additional comments as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and comments shall be confined to the nature of the agenda, and today's public hearing agenda covers Bill Number 66-38 by Speaker Frank Blos Jr., which is an act to add a new 65121 to Division 3, Chapter 65, Title 10, Guam Code annotated relative to codifying the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan and requiring an annual review and exercise of the plan. For the record, the committee invited the following agencies to participate in today's public hearing: the Office of Civil Defense, Guam Homeland Security, Guam Police Department, Guam Fire Department, the Mayor's Council of Guam, the Guam National Guard, Department of Military Affairs, and the Office of the Governor, the Chief of Staff. Additionally, the Bureau of Budget Management and Research provided a fiscal note on Bill 66-38 COR dated March 6, 2025 stating that per Guam Homeland Security Office of Civil Defense, the estimated fiscal impact is approximately 196,000 per annum. According to BBMR, funds would be required for salaries and fringe benefits for a planner two, or sorry, excuse me, a planner three at $72,612, and a program coordinator three at $72,612, computers costing $3,000, supplies at $2,500, planning meetings, venue rental costs of $7,500, and indirect costs of $37,783. BBMR anticipates that the bill may increase personnel and supply costs across different government of Guam departments and agencies in order to establish and/or annually update their continuity of operations plans and continuity of command plans in response to the mandated annual update of the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. At this time, the chair will invite individuals who wish to testify on Bill 66-38 to take a seat before the committee, and before speaking, individuals who wish to make a presentation shall first be recognized by the chair and shall state their name for record purposes. So far, signing in from the Guam Office of Homeland Security will be Esther Agueye. Thank you, ma'am, for joining us, so please, if you could come up, who'll be providing both written and oral testimony, and Ms. Jenna Blos from Guam Office of Homeland Security, Office of Civil Defense, they also provide written and oral testimony. Again, thank you both for being with us today. Now, the order of the questioning will begin with the panel of senators who shall have, each have five minutes to ask their questions. The time allotted to each senator does not include responses that are provided by those testifying. Personal inferences about the character or motive of any senator or any individual commenting is not permitted. Any violations of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room for this proceeding. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form or decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and/or may be asked to leave or be escorted and removed from the room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room. I would now like to invite our Speaker Frank Blos Jr., the author of Bill 66-38 COR, to provide his opening remarks on this measure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you for Ms. Blos and Ms. Agueye and Ms. Paris. Thank you for being here today for the bill. Bill 66-38 was a bill that actually I had introduced last year and had a hearing, and this is a bill that would provide or cause for Guam's emergency management plan to be annually reviewed and updated as well as practiced, okay? And for the most part, while the bill provides some specificity, it is actually intended to like to provide, to give you the broad structure or the broadness to be able to address. I know, you know, I've been with emergency management, I know how acronyms and things can change, and what may have been, what may have been the flavor of the day back in 2004 may not be the flavor of the day in 2025, and if it doesn't call, is not called by that name, give you the flexibility to be able to do this. I want to be able to provide that also that before you're discussing that while the fiscal note recognizes and identifies certain positions that need to be, or that the bill would kind of mandate to be, to be filled, these are actually programs and positions that you should already have, okay? So to be able to answer that with regard to what the funding requirement is, and then that could be for a discussion that we have is, you should have these positions already in, in your structure, in your organization. You know, that said, is, I welcome and I will listen to the remarks that you have, and then I'll provide my line of questioning once you do so. So thank you very much, and thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Speaker Blos. And before we begin with the testimonies this afternoon, the committee requests those who have signed in to provide verbal testimony on Bill 66-38 to please state your name for the record and the name of your organization or agency, and again, if your testimony is provided on behalf of the entity, and whether they support or oppose Bill 66-38. Thank you very much, and I will go ahead and I'll begin with our panel, and who wants to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, Esther Agueye, I am the Homeland Security Advisor. But sir, if I may recommend that Ms. Jenna Blos start just for ebb and flow of the, of the comments that are being provided today, so if you would abide.
Yeah, thanks, General. Okay, no problem. Thanks, Jenna. Go ahead and please proceed.
Hafa de, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, and Senator Taidigui. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide this testimony on behalf of Mr. Charles Estevez Administrator for the Office of Civil Defense. He writes, "Dear Honorable Members of Lijes, Laturan, Guahon, I appreciate the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill Number 66-38 COR, which seeks to codify Guam's Emergency Management Planning Framework and requires regular plan reviews and exercises. I fully support the spirit and intent of this legislation as it strengthens Guam's preparedness and response capabilities. However, I ask that you take the following recommendations to refine the bill's language and ensure alignment with existing laws and federal guidance. Clarifying the official plan name. The bill refers to the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, GCEMP, as the government governing document for emergency management planning. However, the current update to the plan is being conducted under the name Guam Emergency Operations Plan, GEOP. The change aligns with the Federal Emergency Management Agencies, FEMA, Comprehensive Preparedness Guide, CPG 101, which outlines best practices for emergency planning. FEMA distinguishes between a comprehensive emergency management plan, CEMP, and an emergency operations plan, EOP, noting that some jurisdictions use CEMP as an umbrella framework, while others use EOP as the primary operational document. According to FEMA, the CEMP represents broader guidance describing the jurisdiction's overall emergency management program, including preparedness, mitigation, response, and recovery. The current plan is primarily response focused. The territory maintains separate plans for mitigation and long-term disaster recovery. Based on the language in the bill, the term EOP would be more appropriate, as FEMA defines it as a plan for responding to various potential hazards. Since the government of Guam is transitioning to the Guam Emergency Operations Plan nomenclature, I recommend amending the bill to reflect this terminology to avoid confusion and ensure consistency across all emergency management documents. Distinguishing between the Office of Guam Homeland Security and the Office of Civil Defense. The bill references quote Guam Homeland Security Office of Civil Defense end quote as a single entity. However, these are distinct agencies governed by separate statutes. Title 5, Chapter 1, Article 14.1 established the Office of Guam Homeland Security, OHS. It focuses on national security, intelligence, critical infrastructure, and counterterrorism. Title 10, Chapter 65 governs the Office of Civil Defense, OCD, and assigns the agency the responsibility of emergency management, disaster response, and preparedness. The distinction between the two agencies is critical because the responsibilities assigned in the bill pertain to emergency management, which falls under OCD's jurisdiction, not OHS. Referring to both agencies interchangeably could create legal and operational confusion. I strongly recommend revising the bill to designate OCD as the agency responsible for updating and maintaining the GEOP. The bill appropriately places the Emergency Operations Plan within Title 10, Chapter 65, which governs civil defense. However, to ensure proper execution, the bill should explicitly state that OCD is the sole authority responsible for maintaining and updating the plan. FEMA guidance supports having a designated lead agency for emergency operations planning. Additionally, OCD is authorized to employ classified staff, ensuring that the plan is continuously reviewed and updated. Recommended revisions: 3, the use of the Incident Command System for multi-agency and multi-jurisdictional emergency responses. The provision outlined here is too rigid and incorrect. I recommend replacing it with a National Incident Management System, NIMS. FEMA defines the Incident Command System as, ICS, as quote, "a standardized approach to the command, control, and coordination of on-scene incident management, providing a common hierarchy within which personnel from multiple organizations can be effective." ICS combines procedures, personnel, facilities, equipment, and communications in a common organizational structure to aid in the management of on-scene resources during incidents. It is used for all kinds of incidents and is applicable to small as well as large and complex incidents, including planned events, end quote. ICS does not work for every event and isn't, is insufficient for complex, multi-agency, and multi-jurisdictional emergencies. ICS 300, 400, ICS 191, and ICS 2300 teach students that such incidents require a combination of systems under NIMS, including Unified Command, Emergency Operations Center, Multi-Agency Coordination System, and the Joint Information System, excuse me. Replacing ICS with NIMS ensures greater flexibility and alignment with doctrine, allowing responders to select the most effective structure based on the incident. Recommended revision: 3, the use of appropriate command and coordination structures under the National Incident Management System, NIMS, for multi-agency and multi-jurisdictional emergency responses, end quote. 6, the procedure and preparatory steps for the partial or full mobilization of the emergency management plan in advance of an actual disaster. I recommend replacing mobilization with activation. We do not mobilize plans, we mobilize resources. The FEMA Comprehensive Planning Guide emphasizes the activation procedures. If taken literally, this statement suggests physically moving the emergency management plan itself. Recommended revision: Quote 6, the procedures and preparatory steps for the partial or full activation of emergency management operations in advance of an actual disaster, end quote. 7, the designation roles and responsibilities of the Emergency Operations Center Emergency Support Function Team. The provision referring to an Emergency Operations Center Emergency Support Function Team is misleading and does not align with FEMA's CPG 101 or NIMS doctrine. FEMA defines emergency support functions, ESF, as quote, "a grouping of governmental and certain private sector capabilities into an organizational structure to provide capabilities and services to manage domestic incidents," end quote. In FEMA's National Response Framework, NRF, ESFs are not a singular team within the EOC. They are functional groupings of agencies and organizations that provide coordinated support during an emergency. Locally, we created a term for personnel assigned to different ESFs. We call them response activity coordinators. Some government of Guam agencies, like the Guam Fire Department, support multiple ESFs, including firefighting, search and rescue, public health and medical services, oil and hazardous materials response, and public safety and security. Recommended revision: Quote 7, the designation roles and responsibilities of agencies and personnel supporting emergency support functions, ESFs, within the Emergency Operations Center, EOC, end quote. Conclusion: While Bill Number 66-38 COR is a positive step towards strengthening Guam's emergency preparedness and response, several key revisions are needed to ensure clarity, operational effectiveness, and alignment with common doctrine. I strongly urge Lijes, Laturan, Guahon to incorporate these revisions to ensure that Guam's emergency management framework is legally sound, operationally effective, and fully aligned with best practices in disaster preparedness and response. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to continuing to collaborate to ensure the safety and security of our island and its people. We remain steadfast in our commitment to improving our partnership. Signed, Charles Estevez, Administrator, Office of Civil Defense.
Thank you, Jenna, for that. I'll now turn it over to General Agueye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hafa de, Mr. Speaker, and honorable members of the Lijes, Laturan, Guahon. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 66-38, which seeks to codify Guam's emergency management planning framework and require regular plan reviews and exercises. I fully support the intent of this legislation and believe it represents a critical step towards strengthening our island's emergency preparedness posture. First, I would like to express my full endorsement of the testimony provided by Mr. Charles Estevez that was just read right now. His recommendations regarding terminology alignment with FEMA guidance, clarification on agency roles, and technical corrections to the bill's language demonstrate the thoughtful expertise that has been the hallmark of his leadership. His suggestions regarding the transition that has been from GECAMP to GOP nomenclature and the adoption of the NIMS rather than the ICS as the framework for multi-agency coordination are particularly astute. As the Governor's Homeland Security Advisor and the previous Adjutant General of the Guam National Guard, I have witnessed firsthand the challenges our island faces during emergencies. Typhoon Maor's devastation in 2023 revealed significant gaps in our emergency response framework that must be addressed through a comprehensive and coordinated approach. And while I strongly support the spirit and intent of Bill 66-38, I believe we must take this opportunity to conduct a more thorough evaluation of homeland security and emergency management structure of our government. The current statutory framework, as outlined in Title 5, Chapter 1, Article 14.1, established the Office of Homeland Security with a focus on national security, terrorism, and critical infrastructure protection, while Title 10, Chapter 65 established the Office of Civil Defense with a focus on emergency management. This bifurcated approach, while established with good intentions, has at times led to confusion regarding roles, responsibilities, and authorities during emergencies, and as Mr. Estevez correctly noted in his testimony, referring to both agencies interchangeably could create legal and operational confusion. So I would like to offer an unconventional perspective on the strategic differences between homeland security and civil defense functions that may not be immediately apparent but significantly impact the people of Guam. Homeland Security focuses primarily on preventing threats through intelligence gathering, counterterrorism, and critical infrastructure protection, a forward-leaning posture that seeks to identify and neutralize dangers before they materialize. Civil defense, by contrast, operates with an acceptance that disasters, whether natural or man-made, will occur and focuses on response, mitigation, and recovery. This difference is not merely semantic but reflects fundamentally different operational philosophies. The military strategist Carl von Clausewitz distinguished between preparation and planning, noting that no plan survives first contact with the enemy. In our context, homeland security prepares us for the known threats, while civil defense plans for the unknowable and the unexpected. And so for the people of Guam, this distinction has profound implications. Our unique geopolitical position in the Pacific places us at the intersection of multiple threat vectors, from natural disasters to potential military conflicts. Our citizens deserve a system where these complementary functions work in harmony rather than in competition. And when a resident of Timuning or Dedido or Malesol faces an emergency, they don't distinguish between which government agency should respond based on whether the threat was preventable or inevitable. They simply need immediate coordinated assistance, and our organizational structure should reflect this reality. A whole-of-government approach to protecting our national security interests and our island and the people who live in this land that we love would better serve us for now and generations to follow. This, the artificial separations we create in government often impede seamless coordination needed during crisis. By aligning our homeland security and civil defense functions more harmoniously, we not only improve operational efficiency but honor our deep commitment to protecting this sacred place we call home. This isn't merely about governmental reorganization, it's about ensuring that our love for Guam and its people is reflected in system design to protect them with the fullest measure of our combined capabilities. I respectfully offer the following recommendations for your, for your consideration. Number 1, a comprehensive review of statutory authorities. I recommend that the legislature conduct a thorough review of Title 5, Chapter 1, Article 14.1, and Title 10, Chapter 65, to ensure clear delineation of roles, responsibilities, and authorities between the Office of Homeland Security and the Office of Civil Defense. Such a review should examine whether the current structure optimally serves the needs of our island's comprehensive emergency management program. Number 2, clarification of Homeland Security Advisory Role. As detailed in subsection 14.104.1 and subsection 14.1.04.2, the Homeland Security Advisor has significant coordination responsibilities across government entities. I recommend these sections be evaluated to ensure they complement rather than potentially conflict with the OCD Administrator's statutory responsibilities. Number 3, alignment with federal emergency management structures. Our emergency management structures should mirror those at the federal level to facilitate seamless coordination during federally declared disasters. The current division between homeland security and civil defense functions does not always align with federal counterparts, which can complicate disaster response and recovery efforts. Number 4, unified emergency management entity. Consider whether a unified emergency management entity with clearly defined divisions for homeland security and emergency management functions might better serve our island's needs, similar to models in many states and territories. And number 5, reporting security concerns. I must express concern regarding the reporting requirement in Section C of the proposed legislation. As written, the bill requires that a report on shortfalls and response gaps be submitted to the I Magahagan Guahon and I Islaturang Guahon. Since documents submitted to the legislature become public records and are typically posted on the legislative website, this will make our security vulnerabilities openly accessible to anyone with the internet access, including those who might seek to exploit them. I strongly recommend that the bill be amended to replace the written report requirement with provisions for a closed briefing to be conducted with the Governor and appropriate legislative leadership. This approach would ensure proper oversight while protecting sensitive information about our emergency response capabilities and vulnerabilities from those who might use this information with harmful intent. Senators, you know, throughout my career, I have been guided by faith-based leadership principles that emphasize stewardship, service, and protection of the vulnerable. These principles reinforce the moral imperative to build resilient systems that protect our people during their most vulnerable moments. Strengthening our emergency management framework is merely, is not merely a matter of governmental efficiency but a moral obligation to those we serve. In Ecclesiastes, we are reminded that two are better than one because they have a good return for their labor. If either of them falls down, one can help the other. This wisdom applies to our emergency management structure. Agencies working in harmony with clearly defined roles will better serve our people than those working in silos or with overlapping responsibilities. In conclusion, the aftermath of Typhoon Maor demonstrated that even the most well-intentioned plans can falter in execution if not regularly reviewed, exercised, and improved. Bill 66-38 represents a positive step toward ensuring our emergency plans remain a living document that evolve with our needs and capabilities. And I strongly urge the I Islaturang Guahon not only to pass this important legislation with Mr. Estevez's recommended amendments, but to also consider a more comprehensive examination of our homeland security. of our homeland security and emergency management structure to ensure it ultimately serves the safety and security needs of our island community. The people of Guam deserve nothing less than our most thoughtful and coordinated approach to protecting them from emergencies during emergencies and disasters. Sisus Massey, for your consideration of these recommendations, and I stand ready, as always, to assist the legislature in any way needed to advance our shared goal of a safer, more resilient Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, General, and thank you again, Jenna, for your testimony today. I'd like to recognize our vice speaker and also a member of our committee. Vice Speaker Tony Ada is with us. Mr. Vice Speaker, thank you for being with us. And as we jump into questions, we are going to end with the bill's author, but I'll go ahead and begin with the members of the committee. And if I can, can I go ahead and begin with you, Vice Speaker Ada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll yield to the author of the bill first prior to my...
Okay, he's asked to defer, so I'll go ahead and allow Senator Tadey Lee to go ahead and ask questions as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to my colleagues, especially ladies. Good afternoon to you. Thank you for being here to provide your testimony. And yes, it's a fully loaded testimony, if you ask me. I mean, it's not just reaching out to actually provide, you know, what's desperately needed to this, what the legislation has in place for this, the management plan, because we know, I mean, even in 2016, there was supposed to be a get-together of minds and discuss how to implement this or to make it even better, the plan, but nothing ever happened in 2016. So we're here today, and it seems that there might be some more things that need to be adjusted before we move into a plan, which is rightfully so. So I agree with fixing up Homeland Security and Office of Civil Defense because we've obviously had this oversight hearing regarding that, and there were a lot of issues and concerns in the agencies, both agencies. And yeah, I think we need to clean that up first before we move into anything else. But in the meantime, you know, we're women, we know how to multitask, you know? It's one of our greatest gifts. So I truly believe that we can multitask in creating or updating this management plan, emergency management plan. But I do want to read something for you. It's per comments provided by the BBMR. And at BBMR states that per comments provided by Homeland Security and Office of Civil Defense, as the bill proposes to mandate an annual review and exercise of the GCEMP, the estimated fiscal impact is approximately $196,000 per annum. Specifically, funds would be required for salaries, fringe benefits for planer three, that's $72,612, and a program coordinator three, $72,612. Computers, $3,000, supplies, $2,500, planning meeting venues, rental costs, $7,500, and indirect costs at $37,783 if applicable. The GHS slash OCD also cites the potential additional costs for planning meetings and unforeseeable logistics expenses. Lastly, the Bureau notes that implementation of the bill may increase personnel and supplies across from different government of Guam department agencies in order for them to establish or annually update their continuity of the operation plans and continuity of command plans. Can you make a comment to these costs and see if this is true to form? I'm not sure if it's updated, but can you make a comment on this report from BBMR?
Senator, thank you for that question. I cannot make a comment on that, but I would like to invite one of our staffers, Ms. Lucy Perez, who might be able to answer some of those questions. She has been following some of our financial tracking for a long time, and she might be able to answer some of the questions you may have.
Lucy, can you come up and help answer the question of Senator Tadey Lee, please? Thank you. I know you signed in to be here but not to testify. Please, if you can assist.
Good afternoon, senators. My name is Lucia Perez, and I work with the Office of Homeland Security, Office of Civil Defense.
So just let us know where these numbers came from. Did you provide it to BBMR? Is it up to date?
That's why I just wanted to say, to be clear, I did not provide these numbers to BBMR. I am looking at what is posted on the website. I believe the numbers were provided from Administrator Estevas as a physical note request to BBMR, and that's how BBMR came up with those numbers in the report.
Thank you so much, Jenna. You want to say anything about...
Apology, Senator. I'm not in an acting administrator capacity. I did read his testimony on his behalf, but unfortunately, I don't have the answer as well.
Okay. Well, maybe we should get some to find out if these numbers...
We know that the number's in the budget, but we also can, the committee can also ask Senator as well.
Okay, well, other than that, you know, go ahead, Esther.
Yes, ma'am. What we could do is we could certainly take your question and pose it to Administrator Estevas and see if he can answer that question for you, ma'am.
Okay. If not, I'm sure the author of the legislation might know more than I do right now based on this fiscal note, but I appreciate you for being here and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to ask questions. I'm pretty sure, you know, we can actually just look at two things to this. One, cleaning up Homeland Security and Office of Civil Defense, and then creating the regulations going into and readjusting this management, emergency management plan in place. I think we can do both. It's not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tadey Lee. I now turn it over to Vice Speaker Ada for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome to the legislature. The, you know, I believe this is a very important plan that really needs to be updated and perhaps even an exercise annually. We see what we happened during the pandemic, where a lot of confusion in the very onset. A lot of things that was going on during the pandemic, yes, it was a very first of any kind, but just prior to that, we did go through an exercise of how things would be conducted and even with mass casualties and who would do what and where. However, that plan did not even come to fruition because they decided to shelve it. But I think moving forward, we really need to get together with the private sector and work this plan to where we know who is involved, what will be involved, and how things will happen. And for example, the mass casualty part, where a lot of the casualties from COVID were going to the hospital, and the hospital was not able to handle the situation where they relied on the private sector to pick up the slack. And I think it was truly unfair for that to happen without even consulting the private sector in how this would affect the private businesses. It's very unsettling that government would do that to the private sector instead of working together. And I think it's important that we forget the past, look what we need to do, and see how is it that we can make the plan effectively work regardless of who is in charge of homeland, who is the governor, the lieutenant governor. Let's make something that is going to be workable for all, so that eventually, we're all not going to be here one day. And, you know, we're going to, we want to make sure that we pass on something to our, you know, to the future leaders of our island and say, hey, this is a plan that we've constantly updated, this is a plan that we constantly practice and exercise. Is it going to be perfect? Perhaps not, but at least we know something that we've tried, we've exercised, we've planned, we updated, and it's just a round robin with doing those things. And I think we get a better response from the private sector in ensuring that moving forward, that this plan will be a very cohesive plan that is workable for everyone. And, you know, like again, the pandemic is something that we've never been through, and it was an exercise that shows where our gaps are, where our shortfalls were at, and how we can perhaps do things better. And I believe working together, we can actually make it happen and leave things better than we received it and better for the future, and hopefully that we never have to see another pandemic. But if we do, we say, you know what, we put that plan together, we worked it throughout the years, and let's see it go into action, or let's see how we can continue to update. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions. I'd just like to thank you for constantly being up there and doing what you guys can do, but we just need to ensure that we do things better and perhaps make it a better project for all of us and how we can move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Before I turn it over to the bill's author for questions, as a member of the committee, I just had a couple of questions if I could. And I just wanted to ask, I think, I think, first by saying this, is that in this room, we have perhaps the, almost the brain trust of what has been the emergency management plans over the last three decades in this room, and I think there's a couple missing pieces. But just know that in terms of the experience and the like, I think we have many of them in this room today. So thank you again for your service to the people of Guam collectively. For the benefit of the committee and the listening audience, can you provide what information may be available regarding the implementation of a continuous training program for agencies and individuals that will be called upon to perform key roles in territorial post-disaster response, maybe, yeah, post-disaster response and recovery efforts? If you could possibly ask that across the board. Anyone can answer, that is fine.
The Office of Civil Defense has a state training coordinator, and that position does reach out, and we work with FEMA, we work with our other partners like TEACs and also universities, and we bring trainers out on the island. We just recently hosted, in reference to the plans that was mentioned by Ms. Jenna, we conducted a class in December of last year, and we did bring in partners from the private sector, from the government, local government, and federal government. So there is an ongoing calendar, and based on availability of the instructors and based on availability of location, we do send the invites out. Now, with those invites, as much as the training coordinator can push the invites out, and I make phone calls also to my, because I handle, I'm ESF2, which is Emergency Support Function for Telecommunication. So when I see trainings that come out, I reach out to my private sector companies and I push them to attend. So there are trainings ongoing. And in terms of the plan itself, going through, working it, I'd like to, you know, when Senator Tadey Lee was asking the question about the budget, it was regarding the physical note that was provided by BBMR. I couldn't respond to that because I didn't see that note, so that would not be fair. But what I can respond to, what I can say is, we would need to, because I have been looking at numbers, I've prepared budgets, what needs to happen is that we need to provide funding for personnel, not federal fundings but local fundings, because the grant requirements does have restrictions on it. And that's one. And second, we do need additional personnel. Our planning department right now has a party of one, with probably a minimum of three reports or plans that need to be updated. So our training department has a party of one, so just that in itself. Now, what are we doing today? We're making it work. We're doubling up, tripling up our hats and our duties. But if we want to have this work in the right way, I personally think we would need to bring in not only the brain within the local government, but get a contractor out here that can work with everyone to get everybody together to sit down, to gather the data. And Speaker Bloss and I went through this, and, you know, I can see his face, he did when he was the HSA at that time, when we went through the plan. He had a sequester for a minimum of six months, but even with that, bringing in all the government agencies and the private sector, we still had to have somebody to oversee that, and that takes money.
Well, thank you for your recommendation, and just be advised that at the judiciary in Guam, who also has similar plans, it's also done by current staff, as the speaker mentioned a bit earlier, so just want to put that on the record. I only have a couple of the questions. Recognizing that village mayors are required to help maintain a general level of emergency readiness, which includes keeping, again, their support function to you all, can you share with us how exactly our mayors may be able to assist with emergency readiness during these non-emergency times and how they would be part of this as well?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that question. So we do have an ESF rep for the mayor's council, and so when activated, we inform them, and they come and they receive all the briefings that every other ESF personnel receives. In addition to that, we include them in our heavy weather briefs, we include them in our JIC releases, we try to give them priority whenever notification needs to be made regarding, you know, any kind of crisis in the community or upcoming or pending storms, and we lean forward, and we understand that the mayors are our touch point to the residents, and we understand that if we keep them informed and we support them, then the likeliness of us being supported by them is highly likely to occur, and we realize that they play a significant role in not only homeland security but also in emergency management.
Thank you for that. Learning from our experiences following Typhoon Maor in 2023, what coordination is in place to assist folks like the Guam Visitors Bureau, the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, and other relevant private sector entities when we're having to manage the hundreds of folks that might be in our hotels or here, who are not permanent residents of Guam as a result of any major disruptions to our critical infrastructure, whether it be the airport or seaport?
Very difficult task to do, but it can be done, and we've done it before, and Ms. Lucy was alluding to, well, you know what, let me just let her speak. She wants to speak over me, so I'm just going to, I'm going to shut up so that she can speak.
Within the Emergency Operations Center, there is an ESF or GHRA, so we do coordinate with them. When there is any request that comes in, for example, to assist with their critical infrastructure, such as power or water restoration, the GHRA members will call in or come and see their ESF representative. That ESF representative who sits right in front of the utilities will request that coordination. So that's how they support. And if they needed support for American Red Cross to come in, or if they needed support for even communications, they, through the DLAN system and through just turning around and asking for help, that's where all the coordination happens.
Thank you for that. And kind of going to the vice speaker's question earlier, I think moving forward with not only the work on this particular piece of legislation, but in any future legislation relative to emergency management in the U.S. territory, we must ensure that the private sector organizations of this community at every level, also, we cannot forget, non-governmental organizations, they need to be addressed, not just at every ESF level, but they need to be addressed as part of our plans moving forward. Moving on, I'd like to defer now to the bill's author, Speaker Frank Bloss Jr., for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, ladies, for being here. You know, and I guess one of my overriding questions is, you know, Bill 68-38 is a carbon copy of Bill 210-37. This is the same. You take 210-37 and 66-38, put it together, and they match. I made no changes to it. I made no changes to it. But what's interesting is that when in your testimony, your agency's testimony on Bill 210-37, you vehemently oppose this piece of legislation. Now you fully support it. What changed?
Available resources, Speaker.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but the resources were the same last year as they are this year. So what else changed?
Well, we realized, sir, if I may.
Yes.
We realized the severity of the importance of emergency management. We've always known that. But we have the support of the legislature. We have your attention. And since we have that, Speaker, you know, we are, we're going to endorse, and we're going to be in favor of anything that could help us. We realize that our weaknesses can only be solved with others who want the same thing, with like-minded people. And we can't do it all alone. But with your support and the support of the 38th Guam Legislature, and as I've said, a whole of government approach to the private sector, we can only be better, because certainly, standing alone has been very difficult.
Okay. Well, appreciate it. You know, one year later, but that's fine. We can, like as Vice Speaker said, we move forward. Okay? Now, thank you for the recommendations and the suggestions that you and Mr. Stavis have been able to provide. Quite honestly, a lot of the stuff that you pointed out should have been done already. Okay? You make reference to that you would prefer that the Guam Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan be changed out to be recognized, first off, as the Guam Emergency Operations Plan. And you further state, or Mr. Stavis states, that you're currently updating the Guam Emergency Operations Plan. So there is a plan in existence, other than this plan? There is? Couldn't we then recognize that your emergency response plan is actually, should be an annex to your Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan? You still need to do an emergency management, Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan? I don't see why you need to be able to do this, to say, to change this over, because changing this over to Emergency Operations Plan doesn't address a lot of the administrative, logistical, the other SWAT responsibilities that are, okay, that aren't covered by the Emergency Operations Plan. Do you agree?
Speaker, if I may, I believe this is why we're here. We need to sort all this out, sir. You know, we realized that the latest plan was in 2016, and we realized the severity of it.
And if you looked at the plan in 2016, it did have the Emergency Operations Plan as an annex.
Correct.
And that, I think, is where it belongs, not to change this out to be the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. That is still necessary. So for you to suggest that we change this out just to reckon, just so that it's just an Emergency Operations Plan, it's but one portion of the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan that needs to be updated, that needs to be worked on. Do you agree?
I agree, sir.
Okay. With regard now to, you made, you yourself made the comment that you, the concern that you had was that this bill would require a report to the legislature, I mean, to the governor, and then to members of the legislature, and you were concerned about the fidelity and the, basically, the security of the information. Let me just point out to you what the bill reads, how it reads. "The Guam Homeland Security Office of Civil Defense shall provide a report to Imaga, Haagen, Guam, and the chairperson of the Legislative Committee with Oversight on Homeland Security and Civil Defense Matters on the outcome of the plan's review." Nowhere here is it to say to all members of the legislature.
Speaker, if I may, will any legislative record be available on the public website?
No.
I stand corrected, sir. My concern was that if it got any legislature, I, you know, I just want to protect.
It's very specific that it goes to him.
I stand corrected.
Okay. And we just wanted to make sure that, thank you. I mean, I agree with you, but that's not how the language read. It read exactly how you wanted it to read. Okay? So I agree with you on that. And so, again, this is, the concern that I have is, I pulled this up yesterday, and what I pulled up yesterday looks exactly what I pulled up a year ago. Okay? And a lot has happened over the last 365 days. As a matter of fact, so how did the exercise go yesterday, the tabletop exercise, mass casualty that you're supposed to have, JRM? Did you guys show up to that?
Speaker, we, as far as I know, we were not invited.
Then you better check, because the last time I checked, you guys were. Because there was a lot of reference to, and this is what irks me, when the exercise referred to the Guam Emergency Management, Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan as goofy and loosely put together, it doesn't see a lot, you know, there's not a whole lot of confidence in our operations. That needs to stop.
Yes, sir. Sir, I find it disturbing that if we were invited to attend an exercise, especially if it involved homeland security, I was not aware of it. And if we were not aware of it, could you tell us who the invitation came from? I could probably reach out to that person and find out, you know, if there's any details that we missed. But if we did miss it, it wasn't done deliberately, Speaker.
Okay. Well, it was just interesting how people knew that this was today's event was going to happen and said, well, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be exercised. So we'll give you the feedback. And then the information I get back is, I'm sorry, sir, but they weren't there. I'll get back to, let me find out, all right? But, guys, but even at that, even if you weren't there, there should be a document, there should be a plan that whether or not you're showing up or not, you're not there, that this island has a comprehensive and a unified plan, and they know exactly what we're going to be doing on our side based on our plan, that they can be utilized, they can use. That's what we have to avoid. Okay? That's the disaster in itself. And what this bill, and with now your support on this, okay, will fix that. And I'll help you fix that, General. Okay? Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As we're wrapping up the testimony, you want to give closing remarks, or is that pretty good closing?
I think I've got pretty good closing, right, guys? We got your support. Everything's good. Oh, the other way. Lucy, do me a favor. Do you have a copy of the letter? Both letters. Okay? Read who it's addressed to. You see it? Thank you. You see the address? Thank you. Okay? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. "Well, the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and Guam National Guard, your Guam National Guard, appreciates the attendance and participation of all senators and community stakeholders in this public hearing on Bill 66-38. The Committee will review the information received during this hearing and communicate further with relevant government and non-government entities if necessary. The Committee has tentatively scheduled a markup on Bill 66-38 on Tuesday, April 1, 2025, at 2:00 p.m. at my legislative office located at 120 Faradu Duenas Avenue, Capital Plaza, Suite 103, Haguna, Guam, 96910. Committee members and the primary author of Bill 66-38 are invited to participate in the markup. The Committee will continue to accept written testimony on Bill 66-38 for the next five business days or until Thursday, March 27, 2025. Testimonies may be submitted via email to office.schawn@guamlegislature.gov through the Legislature Mailroom here at the Guam Congress Building, or they may be delivered directly to my senatorial office here in the capital city of Haguna. With that, this public hearing by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and our net Guam National Guard on Bill 66-38 is hereby adjourned. The time now is 1:58 p.m. Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here, and thank you, senators, for being here too.